... indications in order for December 9, 2021. Indication, Dr. Banks.
That's great. Dear precious Father, we thank you for this opportunity tonight. Father God, we thank you for your Son Jesus Christ. Thank you, Father God, for the Holy Spirit, our conqueror and keeper. We ask, Father God, as we are here tonight, assembled in this work session, we ask, Father God, that you continue to allow us to do great things to impact the lives of our stakeholders in this community. We ask, Father God, for all of our children, our students that go to school every day. We ask, Father God, that you continue to strengthen them, bless them. And I pray, Father God, that anything that's on their minds that's wearing them down, any contemplation of doing things detrimental to their health, I pray, Father God, that we will be able to just talk to them and educate them about the goodness of life, about the fruitful things that can happen in life if we take care of ourselves and listen to our elders. And I ask, Father God, in the name of Jesus, that we would work together in this meeting, that we would do the things that's feasible as we move forward. I ask, Father God, that you touch all certified and classified staff within our school system. And I pray, Father God, that you allow us to be on one accord. And as we get closer and closer to Christmas Day or Christmas morning, I pray, Father God, that you have the kids do things decently and in order. And I pray that we might not all have the gifts that we want, but we do have the gift of life. And I ask, Father God, in the name of Jesus, that you would continue to allow us to do great things. Anybody that's on the bed of affliction tonight, I pray, Father God, for healing up their body, because I know that by your stripes, we are healed. And I ask this prayer in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, anybody got a copy of the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Any questions? The motion to adopt the agenda.
We adopt the agenda as presented.
Mr. President, Mr. Wayne, second, all the favor. Well, Lisa.
Yes, sir. I want to welcome all of our visitors here tonight and just send out a word of prayer for our board member, Ms. Tanya Wilkinson, who's not with us tonight. I know she's dealing with some health issues. And we just want to keep her family and her in our thoughts and prayers. We will move forward with our meeting. School update, we have Ms. Mary Vickers, who is here from Ambrose Elementary School, and is going to give us an update from Ambrose. So, welcome, Dr. Vickers, if you want to come to the podium.
Good evening.
Evening.
Before it began, I had several of my admin team. I asked them if they wanted to come tonight and join me. And the first response was, I mean, every one of them had somewhere to be. And I said, well, it is a busy time, the holidays, so I'll excuse you. I'll go about myself. They had to answer side of the practice and all this stuff. So, anyway, I'm just glad to be able to share Ambrose with y'all. First of all, I know that y'all have been aware that we have the cultivation stations, which is our outdoor classroom, that was established in 2019. And we have enjoyed that area in our school so much. The kids get to see the different plants and vegetables grow. And we've actually shared a lot with them growing some of the, when we get the produce gathered. And it's just been a real positive thing on the campus to see. And the next picture is going to show some more of the things that we actually gathered from the garden. If you can tell there on the plate, we gathered the, okay. We gathered the okra, and they cooked it. And then they had, we actually used our pear tree to make some pear tarts. I know you ladies know those pear tarts. We just have had real success. Last year was a little bit different because we were able to bring in the community like we had been. But now we're starting to hope to start bringing some of that back in. But as you can see, it's beautiful, and everyone's enjoying the vegetables off of the garden. The next picture is the parts that we added this past year. We added the hydroponic part of, this sounds so, so, you know, we know what we're talking about. People come, like, this is the hydroponic. This is the, we were able to add the part where we had, without the soil, you know, it's just the water system that we have, the system that has a constant drain. Unfortunately, we weren't able to produce things up to a certain point, and then we had to transplant them because we were just not quite equipped with some of the things that we had planted there. It got kind of large. We moved it to our greenhouse, which is the bigger picture there to your left. And that was an addition this past year. We added a little greenhouse. And so, we add things and making it be successful. Here's when some of the students had used their plants and went out there. And I'm telling you, those kids would go out there and want to see how much their own little plant from the seed they planted, how much they had grown. And so, that's, again, some of the kids there showing you their plants. We partnered with the FFA. They went around, not just our school, but with some of the other elementary schools that helped plant some, plant some fruit trees. We had already had the additions in some already in part of our outdoor garden. But they came, Mr. Highsmith has been great. He brought some of his students, and they actually, it was amazing. I said, we should record it because they really did a great job explaining to the kids the parts of the plants and why they were adding in this cow, black cow dirt. And they just did a really good job of explaining to them what was happening to the process of, you know, how they were planting them. So, that was a good thing, partnering with the FFA kids. We also use it for other reasons. We had the sheriff's department come out. And this was, of course, with the, doing some outdoor, not just for our plants, but they actually were sharing some safety things here with the cultivation station. So, that was how we use the outdoor classroom. We moved inside, and we have the STEM lab. And as you can see, the kids, they, it's the most, I reckon, the most noisiest is, it has, it's just an area that's, when you go in there, it's like, oh. You don't want to stay long because it gets so noisy sometimes. But then sometimes it's like you want to see the excitement of the kids. But they really get started in there and get to working. And it's just great to see them get together in teams. And a lot of it is with teamwork that they designed this. This is not robotics. This is just the rope box at this point. They're just learning how the different parts of assembling, mainly teamwork. They've done actual made-of cars and boat racing. They've done some exploration-type thing with gravity and those kind of things. And then they have had some art music-type things. So, that's been a good thing that's going on. We have, on Unity Day, we try to throughout the year, we've really been focusing on being kind and some of the positive characteristics for the kids. So, that was just one of our days that we celebrated, being the Unity Day. The bully, no bully, okay? Here's the veterans program that we had. Mr. Loving, I know y'all are all familiar with him. He comes out and just does a great job with the help of making the kids. They just, you know, they're just famous actors and singers up there. But they do a good job. And then the veterans, we've had several of them to comment and say, what an amazing feeling they have when they leave. It's just such a good, it's one of those days when you leave school, you're just like, this is a good day, you know, you just had a good day that day. But that was a good program that was going on. Trojans, you know, we have the Trojan program. They come out, and the kids were able to join and, you know, just talk to the Trojans. Some of them read books to them. As you can see down there in the lunchroom, the Trojans go around and see their former principal, I mean, teachers or whoever. And of course, the lunchroom ladies are always one of their favorites. So, that's why I chose that picture. We celebrate and celebrate and celebrate student success. We celebrate academics. We celebrate characteristics. We try to incorporate all areas because we know not all kids are academically successful sometimes. So, we try to incorporate things that's not just about academics. And that's what the Golden Eagle part is down at the bottom on the right, is those kids are chosen for different things that they've done for the month from their classroom, have each grade level, that turns in a name. And those kids are celebrated too. So, that's just some celebration things. This is probably one of the most, just very successful and one of the things that our kids still talk about, even kids when they leave Ambrose, is our Eagles Nest. We do a monthly, it's all about the student advocacy part and trying to make sure that all kids have an adult in the building, that they, a caring adult that they can go to if they have any problems, if they just want to go, just need a hug that day or just something. Every child has a caring adult in the building. So, once a month, we meet with them. That the teams usually are about, or your group is usually about eight. It takes about eight to 10 for each adult to have. So, it's not just, you know, of course, not one per child. So, in this particular time, we did the Know Your Worth. That was that month, last month, that we had just finished the Be Kind. And some of the kids wrote post-it notes or notes to their friends or someone else. And I just thought some of those were precious, you know, they were, you are pretty. I like you when you play. You matter to me. And then some of them, they just really worked, of course, the older they got, the kids just really, some of them really getting the meaning of it, you know, and it's a good thing, a good feeling for us to know that we're making a difference. And we take it a step further. When our fifth grades leave us and go to sixth grade, every adult or every child, every fifth grader has an adult at school that follows them until they graduate. And I know Adam and different ones has had an Ambrose, former Ambrose student. And they still, like, right now, I have, but every year, see, I still have like sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, tenth grade, all the way up. So, you have a connection with those kids. And the main thing that we do is we send them a little note. You know, sometimes we'll send a little treat with them. But mostly is that we send little notes or, you know, something that says, how's it going? Just trying to keep up with you. You know, are you doing okay if you need me? Or, you know, we just try to keep in touch with them. And we have several, when they come back for the senior walk, when they come back that year, they'll say, you know, thank you for those little notes. And they'll just talk about how, you know, how it's great to know that they're still being thought of. Now, I know Ms. Jackie in the front probably didn't appreciate it because we send, we send, like today, y'all, it was huge boxes and packages having to come because we sent them then to each, we sent them to wherever the schools they are, and then they have to divide them up. If y'all been up there, y'all have probably seen them. You've seen them too. But it is, it's, I know, but I tried to talk to everybody, saying, y'all, it begins a problem. Y'all, please let us know. We, you know, we don't want to be a problem. But the main thing is that we want those kids to feel like they still have a connection as somebody to talk to if they need to. We, just teamwork here, just talking about what a great team I have. I mean, it's amazing at the work they put in for those kids. I mean, they just really work together, really good teamwork. And then the office crew, if you can see us, were the five, those 10 little monkeys, actually, little five little monkeys jumping on the bed. And I was the mama, and Dr. Randy Drew over there, he was the doctor. But we had a good day that day, just dressed up and having it with the kids. You know, anything that you do, the kids love it. But the teamwork is what counts, because everybody works such good together. And we try to celebrate our staff. We try to make them feel like they are just appreciated. We do a lot of things like try to do wellness things, just things like celebrating, giving them a little boost that day of treats. And we started this year, if you'll notice, down at the gym, we started trying to have some activities, but not just for our, you know, for the, giving you some, something to eat. But we tried to give them some mind things, some mindsets of just having that time to relax. And Gina Gibbs actually came out that day. And we were so, at first, everybody that's walking in, was going, oh, gosh, what are we going to do? You know, how, what's she going to make us do? How, you know, but y'all, it was such a relief. Everyone in there afterwards, it's almost like yoga, Shaq type thing she had done with them that day. But it was amazing. If you could see some of the faces, of course, we had to spread out. I was like, oh, but, but it was just, it was a good day. And so, we've tried to continue doing some of those type activities, having some wellness with, you know, our staff, having some, you know, mental wellness, not just physical. But that was a good, good thing we started. And that's part of Ambrose, that right there is just sharing some things, the highlights that we have.
That's great.
Questions about.
Keep it up.
All right. We appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Father. Great report. Appreciate all that you're doing out there, Mary. I mean, the cultivation station is really something else. All right. Minutes, we have our minutes from the last meeting, last month, work session and regular meeting. Board members, any comments, questions about those? All right, if it meets the consent of the board, we can place those on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. The next item on the agenda is the financial report. We have the first report there, which is the November financials. And we have a beginning fund balance of $21,292,555.42. And the end of month is $21,289,684,050. The next report is the comparison. As you'll see, we have the four-year comparison data there. End of month for November, $21,289,684.42. Notice that we increased from the last month, our tax revenues. Of course, our property taxes are coming in. We'll continue to build the fund balance throughout the next couple of months. The next report is the detailed. Any questions about that? And this does reflect the one-time supplement that we did for all employees last month. So, that is reflected in the current fund balance. And then the next item on the agenda is the November Easy Loss Report. And you'll see the collections were $619,860.48. I was talking with one of the managers, Laverne Phillips, earlier. She said they had a real strong customer base the week before Thanksgiving. She said this year was the week before Thanksgiving, and they really came out. So, that should be reflected next month. We'll see that. Any questions about this report? The next item is the Action Pack Grant Head Start. And we have a visitor here with us this evening. And if y'all want to come forward and introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about what you've got going on.
Well, we do appreciate the opportunity. My name's Brian Singleton, Executive Director with Action Pack. Got with me Ms. Angela Carr, who is our Assistant Head Start Director and Douglas native. And what we're coming to you to talk about today is, sure, first off, I want to appreciate the long-time collaboration in operating the Head Start with the school system. Y'all been a great partner in helping us transition the children to kindergarten and helping them prepare for that. And I want to present you with an opportunity to actually even grow that collaboration, working currently with the city, the county, and certainly the school system and with Action Pack to expand the Head Start Center. I've got a little information here for you. I'll pass out. And you'll see I put the pictures on front that would certainly tell the, a lot of the reason for the expansion. As you know, the Head Start Center itself sits kind of on the, right there with the, I believe, the middle school. And we, it's actually high and dry. But then the cafeteria slopes down to a kind of collect, all the water collects there. It sits on top of what used to be, I think, the swimming pool. And it still collects a lot of water. It has flooded. We use it for a warming center for the, for the meals. And we cannot have the children in there anymore because of the flooding issue. So, we are, we are proposing, met with Mr. Charlie Davis, and the city has agreed to write for a CBGT grant to expand the center with two additional classrooms, which will actually eliminate our waiting list for children that are currently on the waiting list. And will also provide a space for a commercial kitchen and a multipurpose dining room. And so, and you'll see the pictures there. The, we'll go through all the, all the details as far as the, the, you'll see the waiting list numbers there and some of the demographics of the area. But again, it's, it's certainly, the need is obviously there from the, from the pictures you see. And again, we are hoping to get this on the, it's actually the June 1st cycle. But if you're familiar with CBGT grants, they do take quite a while to put together. And the region commission will be writing for that grant. Any questions I can answer just on the grant request? I will say the, kind of use the numbers, the grant itself is for $750,000. The estimated cost of the, of the expansion is $1.1 million. Action Pack, we can put in, we're private nonprofit, but we're able to put in $50,000 in Head Start, in Head Start dollars without creating a federal, a federal interest in the building, which we certainly want to avoid creating that. And then we're coming to the, the school system and the county for the additional amount, which is $300,000 to match that with $150,000 to expand the Head Start Center.
Yes, sir. And you are applying for the CBD?
The CBGT, that will be through the cities, actually using their, each, the city can do it every year. They're using theirs this year just for this project.
Great. And this building, if you're not familiar with it, it's the old, when I was in junior high school, they used it as the locker room. And we had to go in there and dress out for, for sports in there. And it was pretty, pretty rough then. And that's been over 30 years ago. So, that's been, it's been there a long time, and it's a pretty rugged building.
They've done a great job trying to keep it up. But it's, it's, at this point, I think it's past being able to be repaired. And in fact, that's kind of the plan, is to bulldoze that, bring that up to gray so it won't have a flooding issue and actually have parking there and then expand off to the side of the front.
Yes, sir.
You talking about taking everything down and coming back?
No, not the whole building, just that, just that piece that's flooding. That's the old, our old cafeteria, the old locker room. The rest of the building is in wonderful shape. And it's actually up higher. It's a new flooding issue there.
Is this planned to raise?
Yes, it is to bring some dirt and raise it up. But still, we're going to leave it as parking.
Right.
And just so we don't have to bring too much dirt in. But then there's enough higher, just, just past that where the current playground is. And we can relocate the playground and add the, add the building up just to attach onto there. About, is it right around 1,800 square feet?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you coming by.
Well, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Well, thank you for coming over and presenting to the boards.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank y'all. Appreciate what you're doing for the children.
I'll thank you. We couldn't do it without your collaboration.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is the Coffey Middle School whiteboards and projectors. We have been working towards replacing the whiteboards and projectors in all of our schools. And at this time, the technology department has been working with the administration at the middle school to move forward with replacing and upgrading the antiquated whiteboards. And so, we have a proposal here that we are asking the boards to approve tonight. And bids were taken. And as you'll see, Mr. Evans has a bid tally sheet there. And South Coast Supply was the low bid with $64,899.69. And we're asking the board to approve this tonight with the supply chain issues that everybody's experiencing. We'd like to go ahead and get this order in so that they can get the equipment and go ahead and move forward and get it installed. And this would be the same model that we used in our new schools that we've constructed. And then also, the schools will have been replacing this equipment with the new, with the new equipment. So, the next school that is planned to do this project with and this same work would be George Washington Carver, the Nightmare Academy. It would be, once we get this done, and you're planning to do this work?
Well, typically, it's a summer process. So, go ahead and knock out the middle school this summer, and then freshmen be on the slate for the following, unless there's a need to move forward with that.
If we're worried about supply, we'll just go in and get what we need to do it.
Yeah.
Just asking, man.
No, no, I'd pleasure the board. That'd be great. Just at this point, you've got one, one project planned. But if we'd like to go ahead, we could plan another.
Yeah, some of it's capacity. We do some of the work with our own people. But we certainly look at getting that done ASAP.
It's relatively smaller school, so it wouldn't be as, as big as doing two schools at once. But, you know, it's about a third of the middle school. Might not be too bad.
If you order more, you might get a better price. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just questioning. I know they need something over there too, you know, so. And if we're going to do it, I don't know. It's just my, that's all, thanks.
Well, we'd like the board to approve this tonight, and we can get a, we can get a bid on.
Can you do an add-on? Can we ask them for it?
Yeah, I guess we could, yeah, if that's what the board, yeah. We can see. I don't want to hold up this project while we're trying to negotiate that. We could.
Will you have something ready on that?
I'll take a look at it next weekend.
Next week, end of January, that's a pretty good way to offer it.
It is.
Yeah, should be able to get us something together on that.
Yeah, the issue we were running into by is the projectors. They said if we ordered in December, it would be about April before we get them.
I was going to say, we'll go ahead.
Yeah, and you would think they'd give us the same price, so.
Certainly. That's right.
How many classrooms are there? Is anyone in that?
About 35.
How much?
About 35 right there.
A lot less than that.
And then.
Just East Block, just block money?
Yes, sir.
Tracy, can we, can we do that, or we?
Well, since, I mean, we need to do our procurement procedures. Since we bid this out, you know, we really need to go forward with this and bid to another one. And we can, we can turn around and do it immediately. We won't have to have it out there, but this won't be as, as much. The cost will be.
Yeah, if I dusted this and posted it, you know, before we got out for the break, mid-January, we could have the bids in. You know, it requires that 28-day process out of our procurement.
Everybody?
Sounds good.
Block?
Go buy them anyway. Go ahead.
We've got to have them.
Take that number again. If you're going to get them anyway.
Yeah, the request is to approve this, this, for tonight. Then we'll come back.
Read that immediately.
We weren't prepared to come in here and do.
No, I thought you were asking about, you know, whatever.
Typically, the way we've done it is just a, you know, a school or two, like that.
Go ahead and prove which plan.
You signed us up.
Yes, sir.
We'll move forward with this.
So, here's the installation bid also was in it. So, there's three parts, the whiteboards, projectors, and then installation.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you, sir. And y'all will be starting on that?
Well, the, we're in the planning phase now, it's slated to start when, when school lets out, as a, you know, pretty disruptive to school, we wouldn't want to try to do that now.
Yeah, that's right.
During the school term, yeah.
That's right. And, and when we do work like this, we would like to just do it all, all at once, but, you know, there are capacity issues that come into play, so anyways.
Kind of excited for the middle school, though, we decided to possibly relocate the board projector and reorient and do some furniture around and just freshen up the school just a little bit.
Yes, sir. All right. Well, thank you. School nutrition, got surplus property here? Ms. Lewis, you have surplus property to discuss?
Yes, sir. The twelve camera kits are, were purchased before I came back, and I've been working with Mr. Evans, and they're not compatible with our current system at our school, so that's why those are on there. The rest of the equipment, with the exception of the oven and griddle, are non-working items and are in Ambrose in the warehouse, so we're trying to clean out some space out of the warehouse. So I'm asking the board to approve this as surplus property.
Well, yes, all this stuff's pretty old.
Yes, sir. The, most of the items, with the exception of the three things I mentioned, are in Ambrose old gym and are not, they're not working and not repairable.
How big a scale is that, is that like?
It's huge.
All right.
Huge. Very big. It can weigh a person.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
Careful.
Yeah. All right, and this, we'll sit for the next 30 days, then we'll come back to the board next month and ask for approval.
Yes, sir.
All right, great. So this is not, we're not asked for approval tonight on this. Let me see, West Green Elementary School Facility Plan. Mr. Jowers and myself met with the West Green Governing Council this morning, and we presented to them a draft plan replacing West Green Elementary School and basically building a new West Green Elementary School. So we're really excited about moving forward with that project, and we met, Dr. Banks and myself, and Mr. Spikes met yesterday with the facilities consultant for the state, and walked through our, our new five-year facility plan with him yesterday, and we're in the process of putting that together. It takes a few months because the plan has to go up to the State Department of Education, and they have to sign off on it, and then it comes back to y'all in March or April, and then y'all hopefully will approve our five-year facility plan, and then we will send it to the State Department of Education or the State Board of Education to be approved after it is approved here by our local board. So there's some steps that we have to go through with getting the facility plan approved, but the number one item on the facility plan that will start July 1 will be a new West Green Elementary School. Of course, we'll keep the existing gym and keep the wings that have been built in the last 10, 15 years. We will keep the, the newest parts of the school, but then replace all of the older buildings. And so the next step is to phase out those older buildings, and by phasing those out, that means we can continue to use them, we could use them indefinitely, but once we phase them out, they will not be part of our official facilities plan anymore, which means that they'll be eligible for replacement. And that means we will be able to seek some state reimbursement for replacement of those older buildings that will be, will be demolished, and, and we will put new construction in their place. So what you have tonight that we're asking you to approve is a resolution that will phase those, those older buildings out, and it says, "Whereas the Coffey County Board of Education has determined that the cost of upgrading the six oldest of the nine buildings composing West Green Elementary Facility is greater than any potential state funding and would constitute an unwise use of local funds, as evidenced in the attached estimates provided by the district's architectural firm, whereas none of the six buildings will continue to be used for any K-12 school purpose, and whereas the Coffey County Board of Education intends to demolish the listed buildings, being therefore resolved that the Coffey County Board of Education is phasing out all buildings, phasing out buildings 2020, 2030, 2040, 2050, 2060, and 2070 of the West Green Elementary Facility, which is building school 3052. And by approving this, we will then send this to the State Board, and they will phase those buildings out, and we'll, we will build new buildings in their place. So this is, and then you'll see the letter from the architect that includes some square footage for each one of those buildings, and then what the replacement or what, what the cost to renovate then would be. And you'll see that the cost of renovation would be, be very costly, and so instead of renovating those buildings, getting them up to speed, we will just demolish them and replace them. We met with the governing council this morning, and what we talked about was, was certainly the, the new facilities plan will be approved in June, July, we'll start the new facilities plan, and hopefully within 12 months, we will be close to ready to put it out for bid and go ahead and move forward with constructing a new West Green Elementary School, so.
We'll have to use portable, later.
Yes, sir. We talked about some portables to house some of the students who were in the oldest parts of the building, and why we construct a new, a new building. All right. Any questions?
What would be the estimated new construction start if everything is, is planned?
I would say 16 months, probably, would be probably soon. It'd be a long one. We should maybe get something a little bit smaller, but near for now.
Right.
Yeah. State ideas?
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah.
What y'all?
Well, the idea, you know, the, the ROTC multipurpose facility was the number one on the east block, and so we're getting closer to be ready to put that out for bid. So as soon as, I'm thinking, once we get that project up and going, then we come back and we'll be hopefully ready to bid this project, so. Any questions, any other questions? All right, the board meeting dates, attended to the board meeting dates? Are there any questions about that? We looked at those last month, put them on the table. If there's no questions, concerns about those meeting dates, we will ask the board to approve those as part of the consent agenda. Are there any other questions? All right, if there's no questions, we will, I will ask the board if we move to an executive session to discuss personnel list as presented and, and the employment and property, also employment personnel, and then also real estate, and Mr. Jowers brought it out, and.
May we exit to executive session?
One second. Question, wait, all favor? Well, may the motion to head to executive session?
May we exit to executive session?
One second. Question, wait, all favors? The work session is adjourned.